So before we do anything on the agenda, I'm going to throw in a curveball. And we've got Karen Gershia here from the SAU office for an introduction. So I will turn it over to you.
I'm glad to see everybody back. Now I need this, I guess. Okay, new process. I don't like these things. So I thought it would be a good idea if I brought Jessica Bickford, new Director of Student Services at the SAU, and tonight to meet you all, put some names and faces together. Jess has came on board on July 1st. She's doing fantastic work. She's picked up a lot of things already and just basically run with it. I'm really pleased that she's been working really hard with the alternative middle school folks at the Bridge Program, because we have all new staff there, three brand-new ones. So she's done a lot of work with them over the summer and getting into the school year. Jess comes to us from Pittsfield, and I'll just give the mic to her for a second so that she could say hello to y'all.
Hello, I'm Jess. I think Karen pretty much introduced me. But if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. But like Karen said, I'm coming from Pittsfield. I was there for 12 years, and I'm happy to be over here.
Awesome. Thank you both. If you ever need anything from us, you know, however you guys do it, I don't know if you pass that up to Karen and she comes to visit us, or you're always welcome to come visit us, too.
It's a pretty broad offer.
Yeah. I mean, if it's anything outside of the purview of the board, I'll just have Josh do it. Because he's good at doing everything, but no, thank you. Great, welcome aboard. Okay, so Agenda Item Number Two is our first public comment section. I don't think we have anybody from the public here tonight.
Um, Karen, just one quick comment. So last meeting attended, and I was able to catch most of them doing it, but I just wanted to remind everybody to stick really close to the links, because I did have a really hard time following everything. Folks who are listening through and not being present in the room, it has gotten really difficult to really hear what's going in a conversant way. You can kind of catch the gist of what's going on. I just wanted to encourage all of us to be kind of trying to say like every word. And you know, with these microphones, it kind of has to be like you're reading it. Real close to the microphone for every word, please.
Good reminder. And so we'll move to Number Three, which is the general review. Patty's got a couple of things. We already took care of the new stamp.
Yes, so the CIP was on the agenda, and that was actually left over from the last meeting. It's going to be its own agenda item at our next meeting. Jerry did send along the report so we could review it ahead of time, and he is going to come on September 20th to go over it with all of you. So that can come off of tonight's agenda under Board Reports. And then I need to add an agenda item for the, you may recall, we have a memo of understanding with the Pembroke teachers to volunteer to be subs. If we could add that to consent, I'll review that when we get to that point. And then I'd like to add, just for discussion, policy under Number Nine, KDR. So we have KD, the social media policy. I'd like to just talk about KD-R, which is the procedures that go along with that policy. And then I have one informational item when we get there.
Any other additions or modifications to the agenda?
I was going to see if we could add one. Just a quick conversation, that I have a question on the COVID dashboard for the Pembroke schools.
Okay, we'll add an 8B. Any others? Okay, then we have minutes from 16 August. Did you have a few minutes from 16 August?
I have a couple quick questions.
Discussion?
On page four, it says this should be a board goal. What are we, we're talking about communication, but it isn't, it's the survey that we're talking about? But it's really unclear. You don't have it in front of you, okay. I'm just going to hand that over to you. Okay. And then... On page six, it says there was discussion about liability for the district. Do we want to add that parents need to sign off and that the district isn't liable?
Whereabouts on six?
Page six. Yes. Yep.
Oh, the transportation thing.
Yep. I have a comment to make, so I'll just skip over that one. And then page two, it talks about the grant with Mr. Garvin, but it just says the grant proposal. We add the name to that. The name of the grant.
Sure, I'll have to look up what it officially is. I'll send it to you, Cindy.
Okay.
He always refers to it as Conservation Grant, but I know there's like an official title.
The Conservation Grant?
Yeah, that's also not the real name of it, though. That's where the money comes from for it, but there's another. Can't think of what it is. Okay, any other comments? Motion in second, still good with amendments? Yeah, Bean, Amy? Okay. Okay. Then if there's no others, all in favor of approving the minutes of August 16 as amended, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstentions? Fantastic.
Send either Conservation License Plate Grant.
That'll work. Okay, so we're moving on to Number Five, which is our Board Reports. We don't have Student Senate. So, Ms. Coughlin?
Yeah, so the facilities crew finished the summer off strong, and we're happy to report the buildings were shining for the first day of school. Also, the first week of school, as the teachers came in, did some of their professional development. We like to piggyback that, so we did a bunch of training with our group to include, but not limited to, the HARA two-hour asbestos training, which we do yearly, workers' right-to-know, universal precautions, slip, trip, and fall, back injury prevention, and bullying sensitivity, to name a few. We also, in the week before school started, and from the last time we saw you guys, we were able to get all our fire extinguishers, fire alarm systems, and fire sprinkler systems tested for our yearly test. We need these specifically to start school to be safe and for our yearly code reports and code checks, which will be happening sooner than later. And then lastly, I think somebody mentioned it last meeting, but the tennis court repairs have started here. They're the town's courts, but they're on our property, and we do our best to maintain them for the town. They've been repaired, and I believe the final stage is to be painted, and those will be opened back up here sooner than later.
Awesome, any questions for Mr. Coughlin? Guess I have to learn how to play tennis.
Pickleball.
Sorry?
Or pickleball.
True. Okay, then we'll move on to the admin team. We'll start with Ms. Gary tonight.
So we had a great start to the school year at Hill School. There's lots of smiles. We had such a good summer and beginning of the year without having to really, you know, focus too much on a lot of the other things that we were pretty much kind of pros at, unfortunately, at this point. So we were able to come in and have a great start to the year. We had our meet-and-greet for the entire community on the Friday before. Huge success, everybody loved it, the staff. There was a lot of positive feedback from staff and families, so that'll be something that we continue, just kind of tweak a little bit next year. And then we had our All-Aboard for Kindergarten, which was the first Monday of the year. Lots of positive feedback, especially from families. And it was great to watch everybody walk in, because they all got picked up on all the buses, and everyone came in and had their kiddos. It was, we lined all the kiddos up, and they went in their little lines, and it was just like they were ready. They knew exactly what they were doing, and off they went, and it was just wonderful. So we spent a lot of time with parents, kind of just going over some of the things. And then ended their first day. But one of the things we did as a staff the first three days back was a training called Regularized Classroom. It was something that came out from the New Hampshire Department of Education. Last year, there was a grant, and a lot of teachers took advantage of it. And we probably had about a dozen staff members go to that training last year and came back and they were leaving about it. So we were very fortunate to reach out to Ms. Daniels, who is the author and person in charge of the program, and she came to us. It has a very complicated explanation of what it is, but it's pretty much about, it's targeted specifically to teach overnight and things that we can do, strategies that we can use throughout the day to create an environment that helps us regulate. So there's a lot of science behind it. She gave great tools with that. So that's something that we felt was just a positive way. And we really spent time kind of talking about what was the last two years like for all of us, and really starting to address that, making sure that we've had a chance to talk through that and giving us tools and things we can use in the classroom. She'll continue to do work with us throughout the school year. We'll have six more sessions with her, there'll be coaching for PD, so we're very excited about that. Two more things, this week is Safety Week. We kind of piggybacked off of the way TRS does it. So this week, we have all of our drills kind of scheduled one day each, we have a different drill each week, just to make sure we're all set for the, you know, what we need, and then we'll continue around the drills from that point on. And then we're gearing up to do all of our benchmark assessments to see where our kiddos are at, so that we can provide any services or interventions that kiddos need, or just to kind of continue moving on under two-one instruction. I think that's it, Chris.
All right, questions?
I have a question for the administrators, but I'll start with you. How has, or have you received any input on having to pay for lunch? You know, that change, which I think might be perceived as a little bit of a big change.
Overall, I think everybody was pretty bummed out that the kids have to pay for lunches again. I don't think we have too much, too many, like a decrease. It's not as big as I thought it was going to be of students buying school lunch, but overall, I think everybody in general wishes that they would have continued that.
And in particular, folks that qualify for free lunch, are you sensing that everybody's getting what they need? Or are, you know, you having trouble getting folks doing what they need to do to get that? Or how is that all going?
We don't have a sense, I think, right now that everyone's getting what they, you know, that they are getting what they need. We do send out all of our free and reduced lunch forms at the very beginning of the year, and those tend to trickle in, you know, in the first couple of weeks. And that's not something, you know, that right now we would know. We're thinking we should have like our salad bar back for our kiddos. And so I think the healthier piece of what our kiddos are very passionate about last year is being addressed, so I think that's a positive.
Others? Okay, Mr. Marston?
Sorry, but, I don't know, that Sunday wasn't Patty. So we started off with a bang, so Sunday morning, I got a text, and then I got another text, and then another text. And I said, okay, who's playing the joke here? As you may or may not have heard, we had five staff out the first day of school. So that has kind of ebbed and flow as begun, but we did get our coverage, and the subs that came in did an awesome job. And of course, the kids were unbelievable. They just did their thing, and you know, kids are more reserved than they are anyway. I know that, so. So it was such a bumpy start, as far as that piece was concerned. It went well, I mean, I'm really pleased with how the school opened. So besides our awful start with the illness, we've worked relatively well, although we're still dealing with it. Our robotics grant that we were rewarded again for $7,345. I think we got the same thing last year, a little less. And so we're, at this point, trying to really see what the best use of those funds are. That's a lot for us. We've already got a program that's really up and running. So it's like, okay, $7,000. Like, your eyes get wide and say, okay, what are we going to do? So we've got a few ideas that we're going to work on, maybe expanding it to more kids and stuff like that, if we can get another coach. $7,345. Yeah, pretty good. Our open house is Thursday night. We're looking for a big turnout. I did send that reminder today, and we are trying to stagger the crowd. That really worked well for us last year. Parking is just an issue. When we have staff, they almost take up a whole parking lot. So we really, you know, we're looking forward to that. Pals will be there. And just that note on pals, they're really doing some really great stuff. They reached out to us to say, hey, can we do a breakfast for you guys? You know, last week, so you don't even have to ask. They reached out to us, that's very nice. Athletics is up and running, we've got all our programs going, cross-country, and both soccer teams are practicing. They actually went out a little bit today and did some work. And the fields are, I haven't been out there, Josh, but they're coming around. This rain certainly didn't hurt. Our busing has been relatively smooth, regardless of what it feels like in New York, I think, when you're out there, but it seems to be mostly on time. We have, just to be honest, we're having a hard time with some of our contracted busing situations, and that's something we're going to try to work through. Like everything, try to get drivers, try to get buses is quite a challenge. What we're going to do this year, we decided that we're going to kind of go back to basics with kids to start with, and when I mean basics, mostly just rules and procedures. So every grade level, they're kids to class, to particularly Unified Arts. So it's quite an event to watch eighth graders being walked to Unified Arts class. What we experienced last year was that we felt like kids kind of needed to refresher on what school looks like. You know, I'm big on the highway, it's just the best place in the world to run as fast as you can. I do it, nobody's looking. So, you know, to have that, we really need to, we really need to get back, make sure you're on the right side, you know, you're not sprinting around the building, you're not hitting each other upside the head as you walk down the hallway. So we really spent a lot of time with just some policies and procedures as a school, but also in the classroom. And we were going to do it for the first two weeks, and we met this morning, and everyone felt like kids were getting it, so we're going to not walk them, but obviously, the presence in the hallway will help that a lot. And we've also done fire drills and all those stuff. But what we do is, we try to do them in the morning during a walk. And Katie, our Assistant Principal, actually reads the directions for everybody for the first time through, so that everybody, including teachers, hear what it is. And then once we get going, we'll stop reading them so that we can test out to see where they needed support. And we're also doing some progress monitoring, that's going to start, you know, it's already started, but really hitting into it next week with what we call STAR assessment. Everybody will get there just to give us a good idea of where we're at. Our lunches, I have not gotten any feedback from parents. Not like what Wendy said, I think it's going to take us a while to figure out, you know, where that's going to be, kids are eating. Like everywhere before the COVID thing, there's kids that are going to eat that don't pay. And so, you know, we're going to have to really remind ourselves to watch that bill as it slowly ticks up, because it can get high quick. So that would be an observation that I have, that I think we have to watch out for. But kids are eating, we'll make sure of that, and then we'll see how all the paperwork, you know, sometimes that's the hard part. So, yeah, that's it.
Questions for Karen? All right. And we will move to our fourth.
Good evening, everyone. Our kickoff day went really well. We have a completely different schedule. We have an opportunity for all grade levels to meet as classes and go over some important information and some changes to the handbook. It's also an opportunity for class advisors and class presidents, class vice presidents to talk to their grades, and that's helpful. And while the upperclassmen are doing that, our freshmen are going through their schedule in hallways that are clear of upperclassmen, which is, I think, a little less daunting for them. At the end of the day, we announced our, some staff recognitions. We have a Spartan of the Year that we name every year, and this year, our Spartan of the Year was Coach Steve Langivan, who is an administrative assistant in Walker House, and a field hockey coach, and a basketball coach, and our sub-coordinator. And the lion's share, the nominations we received for Coach Langivan were for his work as our sub-coordinator. And I think the imagery of the Dutch boy in the dam was used several times, so. But that was definitely a well-deserved recognition. We had two teachers that we named as Teacher of the Year, Lindsay Fontaine and Lindsay Mullen. They're both English teachers who work together as co-advisors for our Student Senate. And they are the staff members who run many of our kind of student experiences, like Winter Carnival, Spring Fling. They are incredibly organized, and they really strike a good balance of providing the support that the students need while still allowing the students to take ownership of those events. And I'm incredibly proud of that program. We also tried something new this summer, where when we assigned parking or when we sold parking passes, we assigned specific spots, and the sticker that they received corresponded with their parking space. And the hope was that that was going to alleviate some of our traffic issues, because everyone would know exactly where they were going to park. Early results show that that may have helped, so we're going to continue to monitor that. But even like day two or three, it looked like things were getting better. It was like 7:26, and we didn't have a line of cars. Now, we did today, so who knows? But, you know, we also had weather, too, so, yeah. But more to come on that. We also had our NEASK liaison visit us on Thursday. He met with Amy and I for half an hour, and then he met with the NEASK Steering Committee for an hour, and then our Subcommittee Chairs for an hour, and then he met with our staff for an hour. And he was very impressed with our school, said that we're in good shape. I wish that was the end of the NEASK experience, but it's not. So we have a lot of work still to do, but feeling pretty good about that. We have our open house on Thursday, the 15th. We are going to continue with an open format for that. The feedback we've received is that that's a little easier for families in terms of scheduling. They can come between that ninety, in that 90-minute window and see the teachers. Before, we used to have kind of a mock schedule, and they were in it for 90 minutes, and sometimes that's hard this time of year for families. Haven't received any feedback regarding lunches. I can tell you that one unintended consequence of free lunches was we weren't getting back the free and reduced lunch forms to the degree that we used to. And that's a trade-off I'll take any day, but nonetheless, you know, that was an issue. So similar to the other schools, those will trickle in, and I'm anticipating that those numbers will be higher. And, you know, we'll go from there. We also received a robotics grant of $11,580. It's not a competition, but I think you'll note that that's a little higher than what John received. And Scott Thibodeau and Colleen McDonald, our two music teachers, are working with the state on a modern band program, which I'm really excited about. They actually hosted a PD opportunity for a number of music teachers throughout the state here in mid-August, and they're going to host another one. It's a two-day event, and they'll host the second day in late September. And Modern Band Program is a program that focuses on the use of modern-day instruments, basically your guitar, bass, drums, keyboard, and it focuses on covering songs that are more contemporary. And so I think it would be a great addition to our band program. I could see that enhancing a lot of the student experience and also providing some additional opportunities for students to perform in ways that they couldn't in a more orchestral setting. So really looking forward to that, and I will report back on how that goes after they meet in late September. So that's all I have for you.
Thank you, questions? Nice to hear about some grants all over the place. Sure.
Going back and kind of piggybacking off of Amy and what the principals had said about the lunches being reduced. I know the paperwork's gone out, but would it make sense to send out through via email to the kids' accounts reminders? Maybe on a weekly basis or something like that, until you see? Just a suggestion, I don't know if that will help. And the other question I have is, students said, receive free and reduced. There's no cash change in hand, sorry, they just write their IDs?
Sometimes it's just a reduced cost, so there is still cash being exchanged, it's just obviously to a reduced price. And other than that, I mean, I can tell you that however that's done, it's done discreetly with the kitchen staff, so no one else would be able to know about it.
That was my concern with the stigma that might go along with that, so. All right, thank you.
Any others? Okay, CIP, we're going to move to next time, but a reminder, the report is in the drive, so everybody can take a look at it. Was there an SAU board, is that coming up?
Exec Board meeting next, what's it, Wednesday, the 14th? I don't know what time. 5:30? Okay. 5:30, how's that?
I just had a question about the CIP materials. Are we looking at them for a particular purpose? Or just, you know, reviewing for familiarity for next month?
Yeah, it's really just reviewing so that everybody's on the same page. This is something that Jim has been working on with the CIP committee throughout the summer, and, you know, it'll eventually get moved to the Munus Budget Committee. So, yeah, it's really just kind of familiarizing ourselves with it. Right, okay. Sure.
Do we need to make a plan for adequate coverage for that next SAU board meeting? I was organizing myself, and I have a conflict that night, so I just didn't know if it would make sense to check in and make sure we're going to have adequate coverage as a board.
I mean, it's my understanding, it's just an exec board, so you don't have to worry about it. Just me.
Correct. Cool. We keep clicking off of my agenda here. All right, so that brings us to Number Six, we got two instead of one?
Yes, I might suggest, I should have done it earlier, that we add a non-public, small letter c. We have a couple of things to discuss about one of the staff requests. The other agenda item, though, is your, I think you probably all remember that we had done a memo of understanding with our teachers, and they have graciously volunteered during their planned periods to sub. And we had done it for one year only. The sub shortage is not getting any better. And in speaking with the EAP, they are in agreement and think that the system has been working well, so a teacher can volunteer when they have a planned period, and they will be reimbursed $25 an hour. We keep a spreadsheet, and then we pay them, you know, twice a year, so we're not trying to cut checks, little checks, all the time. So it's the same, I just changed the dates, and if the board is in agreement, we'd like to renew that so that we can take advantage of that, especially due to our lack of subs.
Is that something that...
Well, is that something that, um, our bargaining people need to meet with them on or can we just take action on it tonight?
No, we talked outside of the meeting because it was the same MOU and they were, they indicated that they would sign it if the board was in favor. So I said I would just bring it tonight and if, if the board is in agreement, then we can just move ahead with it.
Okay. Discussion on that?
I'm making a motion to approve the um, the providing teachers subbing for the second year.
Okay, is there a second? Second. Okay, um, I can't remember if Melanie and Stacy were here last year, so Patty, can I throw it quickly? Do you have questions about what we're talking about here?
I was just gonna say, is there anything you gave what they're being paid and anything else?
Um, it's just four bullet points that they will be given the opportunity to voluntarily sub um, during their planning time and that those who volunteer are compensated twenty-five dollars an hour. Um, number three just says that the assignments will be determined by administration offered on a first come, first served basis. And the administration keeps track of the hours and the payments are issued December and June. And then um, the fourth one is both parties agree. The memorandum is intended to apply to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year only and not considered to be precedent setting. So the same exact thing, just new dates.
Okay, and that, and that was working as it was stated last year? Okay.
I talked to both the union and the principals and both sides were confident that it was a good bargaining document.
Other questions? As I recall, last year also Perrys were involved in this. Um, they would, you know, I'm just trying, I think we did discuss Perrys doing this.
Oh, okay. Thank you, John, for reminding me. Yes, they do have something in their, in their CBA, so we won't need a, an MOU.
Um, and I guess the other thing I'd like to bring up is currently a hundred bucks a day for a sub. So I think that's something we need to revisit, maybe investigate surrounding districts, see what they're paying. Um, and if we have to up that rate so we can get them also. You know, I, I don't know what that number is, but I think that's something that needs to happen to, you know, if it's a hundred bucks a day and you're in the school for what, seven hours?
Yeah.
Which is sixteen bucks an hour.
Can I ask you to bring that up next week? Because the executive board has been setting the sub pay rate and I think it's absolutely worth the conversation and that would probably also help us.
Can we do a quick straw poll of our whole board so that we can set to exec board?
I agree.
I agree.
I agree too.
I agree as well, but I'll just say publicly for what it's worth that my wife does sub sometimes. So if we have a discussion about that here, I will.
Okay.
Accuse myself. Okay, any other questions? Around the MOU or MO, yeah.
Just one more. Can, should I bring it up in discussion or should we put it as an agenda item for next week?
Um, we haven't finished the agenda, so I will add it. Just made a note.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, um, so there's a motion and a second, so if there's no other discussion, um, all in favor of re-proving the MOU from last year with the same language, um, just updating the dates for the current school year? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Fantastic.
Thank you.
Okay, um, so gifts and donations is a goof egg. Um, so we've got eight A goals and strategic plan. Um, so I did not do what I said I would do for this, so I still have to get those over to Stacy, so I apologize for the delay on that.
We have a. A template though.
Yes.
You got that.
Um, we do have everybody in the room tonight, so if there's any other, I guess, quick discussion that we want to have on this, um, you know, as we move forward, we can go ahead.
I have a quick uh, comment and I don't want this to come up as snarky. So the local old home day, I think this is the second year in a row that um, there's been a consideration of maybe the board could participate. But we haven't done any, or we haven't done sufficient advanced planning to do that. And so it arguably could have been a missed opportunity to convert the sport into like, you know, a good board to a great board. And with whatever this document is, whether it's a action plan or a strategic plan or, you know, I kind of understand the differences between those two documents and I understand the distinctions that we made during last night, last meeting's conversation. Just having like a plan for our work and just putting that little item on there have allowed us to accomplish something like that. Um, so that's just an example that none of us came up with of a thing that we could plan to do if we had some more uh, written strategy to our work. So I just wanted to mention that as a really concrete recent example.
Well, that's a good point. Um, I did, I didn't get the information fairly late for the ask. But it does bring up another thing, I'm glad you said that. Last year, PALS did um, a trunk or treat and they asked us to, well, I sort of all told us to be involved and I was there and decorated my car, my kids helped give out candy. Um, I haven't heard for sure if they're doing that this year, but if so, um, would everybody be interested in being represented again?
Yeah.
I don't, I, obviously I don't know a date, so I can't say for sure that I would be able to do it, but I'll keep it on the radar. And if I see something on Facebook, I can reach out to the PALS leadership and make sure that they know we're interested. It was a fun time, even though it was really, really windy and cold last year. But yeah, good point. And I mean, anything that you guys see out in the community that you think would be good for us to be at just as far as outreach and staying in touch with people. Um, there's no reason we couldn't start adding annual events like that to the, to the Google calendar or whatever. Um, you know, with a, a month ahead of time reminder if we need to reach out to somebody, but yeah, good stuff.
I have another thought about the parade and I was willing to walk, but certainly okay that we didn't. Um, it'd be more useful to actually have a booth during the day than just walking and waving where they would actually be able to talk to us. So that's just another thought about that day.
I think that's probably a, a better idea. People can come up and ask questions and then they're not so tempted to throw things at us either.
Yeah, or we could sell the tomatoes, five bucks a piece, throw out. Yeah, fundraiser. Do the duck.
Stacey threw off.
Alright, um, okay, anything else on goals or strategic plan this evening? Okay, and then Melanie wanted to discuss briefly a COVID dashboard conversation.
I just had a quick question. On the SAU fifty-three website, there used to be a COVID dashboard for the different schools and I know it was SAU wide. And I know why that probably came down, like the state changed a lot of what they did. My only question is locally as Pembroke, with our schools, can we have a dashboard for the schools that shows approximately the numbers that we know of? I just think that more families in our community may be more apt to test a kid if they got an allergy symptom, if they know that there's active cases in the school.
The reason that we chose to take it down was exactly what you were alluding to, that we felt like the numbers were not representative of the number of cases and that there's many more cases than we're actually able to report. And since then, I think one, at least one of our schools decided they were gonna do something on their school dashboard. So that's certainly something that we can just discuss with our tech integrators and our school nurses. That's something the board wants us to continue to do.
I just think that a lot of our families in the area were watching it. And if a kid had a sniffle or a sore throat, they were more apt to test because they knew, hey, there is ten cases in that school and I know we're never gonna have all of them. But we do know that there's obviously some cases in our school, so that was just a question.
Can we, you don't know which school it is off the top of your head that's doing something currently?
Mr. Wilberton told me this morning it was Allenstown. It's one of his districts. We talked about it this morning.
Okay.
I think it was Allenstown.
Do you want to, should we all take a look at that between then and the next meeting? And then if we like what that looks like, we can just ask if. I don't want to do anything that's like, gonna be super burdensome to our nurses either, but if it's as easy as, you know, twice a week updating the numbers.
Well, that's what I was thinking is our school nurses obviously know that they're not getting all the numbers, but the parents that are calling in and saying, hey, my kid tested positive. At least putting those ones on the Pembroke school for that school, just so that there's something. I just think we're losing more this year where somebody may be more apt to test.
If, if you decide that that's what you want, I think we can keep it as simple as it was last year, just a little grid that says number of cases. And they would just go in once a week. Um, we asked that it be done by every Friday, but sometimes the nurses went in more frequently if they had time, so. But at least weekly, we were updating it.
Do we have an idea of our Pembroke schools of, I'm sure this case is it?
Well, my, um, my seventh grader child, when I got the notice, I think it was the second day of school, that one of her teachers was out with COVID and then the third day of school, her other teacher was out with COVID. Um, I wanted to check and see like, oh, is there a, you know, large outbreak of COVID at Three Rivers School in Pembroke? And um, I didn't have that information, you know, and I wished I would have. And I think we all know that, um, you know, I mean, I feel like I wouldn't make some big sweeping number, sweeping statement like, you know, every number we've ever read about COVID is probably at least a little bit wrong, right?
Yeah.
Um, and so I think if we're gonna have any sort of dashboard, we can put whatever sort of disclaimer, explainer, et cetera, that like, you shouldn't take this as a hundred percent accurate. It's never going to be a hundred percent up to date. This relies on self-reporting, et cetera. Um, but I, I would be in favor of us providing um, information that is the same or similar to what we provided last year.
Which was just numbers. I, I'm trying to remember what it looked like. It was just a number, yeah.
I, I guess I would make a distinction too, that I would love it to provide the entire school community, you know, educators, support staff, um, students, you know, the whole shebang.
I think it, did it Patty? I don't, I thought, I think it did. I do think it did. I think it was all encompassed.
Yeah, well, I think it did. It's just that I wasn't sure if you were saying a dashboard for just students.
Oh, no, I'm saying at least the, at least the school nurse knows of the ones that have called. And then they obviously probably know the ones of the staff that's not there. So if it's fifteen, and I don't want to make work for them, even if it's every fourteen days to change the number or something, I don't want to make extra work, but they have an idea. I just think that.
I think weekly was fine. I don't think they had any issue with that.
Just because I went to look for it, Amy went to look for it, I don't know if anybody else went to look for it. I have kids at the middle school too.
Mr. Marston?
Uh, the nurses still have to report to the state once a week uh, with any of our potential, well, our, our caseload. So um, I don't think it's too huge of a deal for them just to plug it in on, you know, speaking for Three Rivers. But we still have to report it and it's um, we're getting a lot of cases right now.
Yeah, okay. I know Barrett usually says take a motion if you're not sure, so do you want us to?
Well, I just, uh, I, I just Googled it real quick and it pops up. There is one on the PA website through SAU fifty-three. Um, well, it's got Pembroke. It's got PA, Hill School and Three Rivers.
Did you? Did you flash?
I did, I, I actually did. And I looked at the dates, nine, one and eight thirty-one, so obviously it's not reflective of this week, but um, there is something still there, so.
I wonder why it didn't, it's not on the SAU fifty-three website though, because it's blank. Okay.
Okay, um, you want to make a motion? I guess since we know there's some information, maybe make a really broad motion?
A very broad one? I would like to make a motion that we have some type of number COVID dashboard for our Pembroke schools.
Second?
Oh, you want me to go, to be updated weekly?
Okay. Okay, any other discussion?
I guess I would say, um, consistent with Professor Marston's comments that, you know, I would hope the board would agree, but I would ask Patty if um, state reporting requirements lessen and they have to start reporting, you know, every two weeks or every month. Can you just let us know so we could at least consider whether we want to lessen our requirement, you know, so that, to keep their work efficient?
I wonder if you could change the motion to be reported consistent with state reporting?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we have some type of COVID dashboard number for our Pembroke schools consistent with the DHHS reporting guidelines.
Boom, still second? Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed or abstentions? Little beans. I did want to just note quickly, um, before, I was gonna do it at the end when we talk about next meeting, but um, sometimes people have signed off by then. I do believe on the twentieth, um, there is an initial meeting for the building stuff before the school board meeting, is that correct?
It was my informational item and it was, that's perfect. Um, yes, the first committee meeting with, um, for renovations at Hill School with the architect. Um, so Kevin, I've asked Kevin to reach out and see who can come on his end and we have um, Josh, Wendy, I'm going, um, the architect's going and then whoever Kevin has for the committee. Okay, so everybody, oh, that's great, so. Um, we'll get that going and then once everybody's in the room, I think it'll be easier to come up with a schedule of meetings when everyone has their calendar, because it's hard to do over email. And then I thought we would just update the board as we go along, um, on what's happening with that committee.
I think it's four PM. Is that right?
It sounds right, yes.
So the reason I bring it up is according to our handy dandy officers and committee chairs document, we didn't appoint anybody to that for this school year. Zanzelli is our maintenance slash facilities person, but the Hill expansion one, um, that I filled the slot last year is empty. Uh, I certainly have a vested interest in this and I've been, you know, working at it since before I was even on the board. With budget committee season coming up, I can't commit to being there for all of them. So I wanted to see if anybody has an interest or we should probably, you know, make a nomination and fill that slot.
I'll have to meet Stacy if she's interested.
We did it before a school board meeting, thinking that people would have their calendars freed up on that afternoon. Um, so I don't know that that's how it's gonna be set up for the rest of the meetings, but I would think it would have to be at least after school, so probably four.
Did we have one slated or two?
Just one right now.
Just one, okay.
Does anyone here, I'm sure someone does, when the committee was working previously, did they have a regular meeting scheduled? What time of day did that typically occur?
Sandy?
I think the.
But that was, yeah, and there was no architect involved at that meeting.
And it wasn't staff and I, I'm, I think it's gonna be probably four o'clock.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think I will be able to make many of them, um.
I could be an alternate. I do have every Tuesday and I have a vested interest too, but I also don't know how many meetings we'd be facing during the negotiations, because it's a negotiation year. But I don't mind being an alternate if he has a work commitment or something.
Do you um, have a conception Patty, you know, is it likely to be? I mean, can you just give us some sense of like, twenty-five meetings total, you know, meetings every single week for three months? Like, just give us some lead.
We, once we got up and going in Deerfield, we were meeting before every single board meeting and they meet twice a month. Um, when there was a lot going on, like there's kind of, it's a little bit slow and then all of a sudden there's this push. But with that said, they also jammed this all into one school year to get it on the warrant and we're not doing that. So I don't think it needs to be as rapid. You know, maybe it's, it really is gonna be determined at the first meeting and maybe if, if you're planning to go to the first meeting, we go and then once the schedule's set up, you can come back and say, okay, this is what the schedule's gonna be.
Okay.
Will give people a better idea.
I can do that.
Because I also, you know, I, I'd be doing everybody a disservice if I said, you know, I could be available at four o'clock before every single board meeting, because I can hardly attend every single board meeting. Um, that I can have some involvement, you know, I can come to some of the meetings. And, and I'm really looking forward to the stage when um, there's a product to, a reach to the. the community with.
Right, and, and I think, I mean, I don't have a problem with it sort of rotating, I, I mean, it would be nice for all of us to sort of be in the loop. I just don't really have a good sort of concept of what the requirement is, if it's really just to be in the room and gather information to bring back to this board, all five of us are capable of that and I don't think it's a necessity that it has to be the same one or two people every time. If the involvement is more than that, then we might have to have that conversation again.
Yeah. Everything I remember too is, I mean, if board meetings start at six thirty, I could be wrong, but are these meetings really two and a half hours long?
Well, it depends on the work.
Yeah, so maybe him bumping it to like thirty, six, five, five.
Yeah, but we probably also have staff that's staying after work to attend, so.
Yep.
Okay, well, I, I can plan on going to nine twenty and, and, you know, that later that night, I can fill you all in on what I learned and we can, we can vote on somebody there or vote that we're going to rotate or whatever. If you're free.
Sure.
And there were times in Deerfield when it, when it was getting busy that, you know, we would have a quorum of the board at the meeting just because of board interest and as long as there, you know, it's a, it's a posted committee meeting, so you can go, your other board members just didn't vote if they weren't the delegate, so you're welcome to come.
Cool. Okay, so if there's no other discussion on that, we'll move on to number nine and Patty wanted to talk about KD dash R.
Yes, so I realized there was a reference to KD dash R in reviewing, just to back up a little bit, the social media policy, we did pull your policy and the School Board Association, which we've had in the drive and made sure there was no updates to that before you looked at it, so you can choose to reaffirm it, you can choose to just let it stand, but I do think KDR gives us some of what we've been looking for in terms of the criteria that, you know, when you can remove things, that it's, it's very clear that you don't have to include, allow comments, so I think that would be a good accompaniment to the KD policy if you decide, if Andy decides that he wants to start a school board Facebook page, so it's not, it wasn't on the agenda, so I just wanted to mention it, have you look at it and then we'll have it as a first reading next time and you can decide what you want to do with KD, it's already approved, it's not any different from the School Board Association version, so it's, whatever the board wants to do.
Okay. Do you remember offhand if we have any big items for nine twenty yet? Being a work session meeting, there's nothing that comes to mind that we were planning on.
Wouldn't
Yeah, well, that's kind of where I'm going is I think the social media slash communication is one of the board goals, we've had this policy, the first part of this policy on here for a long time, can we plan an agenda item for nine twenty to, you know, well, do our homework, look at KD and KD dash R between now and then and see if we can finally take some action on this, if we approve the policies, then I can start talks with Mr. Brewerby about getting something set up and.
Since I added it for discussion, I'm comfortable having tonight be the first reading, if you're comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so we can move it to a second reading if everybody has time to look, review it and have that as part of our work session, I think that makes good sense.
Then we can spend a little bit more time on it than
Yep.
I feel like sometimes on agenda item number nine, we rush a little bit, because we have other stuff to do, but we can, I'll be working towards one of our goals, which is what work sessions are supposed to be for anyway.
And we did just get the fall update from the last legislative session, I think there are eight policies required by law that were added, so we definitely have some work to do, there are a lot of policies, but eight of them we're going to have to get to.
Okay.
And if we can get a move on that before budget starts, that would be
Yeah.
better.
Okay.
I did have a question concerning, I sent an email coming out from School Board Association concerning BEDH, is that some, one of the ones, I was going to bring that up?
Yeah, and I didn't worry about, I wouldn't consider that as emergent as, you know, they got it out ahead of the update, because I think there are boards in the state that didn't have that time for public comment and you've always had it and you have it at the beginning and the end, so I think, I think we're covered, but it is in the update.
Right, so, but we don't currently have a policy about that.
I think we do already. Yeah, we talked, because we talked about what we
Yeah, we do.
Had eliminated the ending, public comment and then put it back.
Yep, right.
And then we had the whole conversation about the content of public con, comment as it relates to the agenda.
Yep. I was thinking of a different one. Um, so do, do we want to spend some time on nine twenty on additional policy update items so that we can get ahead of that? I'm afraid, I know that last year we got a little bit behind in the beginning of the year on policy.
So I can put all eight of them on for a first reading so that they're at least on an agenda?
I, I, I feel as if I'm a broken record again, but I think that as a board, we might have a consensus that, you know, when a policy is both required by law and recommended by the School Board Association, there really isn't that much time and work that we need to do. It's really just sort of, I don't want to say rubber stamping, you know, we do need to read it, we need to think about it, we need to vote on it, but I don't think we need that much agenda bandwidth for it, you know? Acting the policies.
I don't, yeah, I don't think it'll be a big discussion either, that's kind of why I want to get it done, we also have a policy committee, so if you guys review and can come to us next time with however many of those eight are just what Amy said, like, this is required, it's recommended by NHSBA, we reviewed it and don't see anything egregious, then we can.
Typically, when it's an update from a legislative session, all they're doing is adding the elements that are required by law, so you're right, I don't think those take a ton of time, it's more making sure there's nothing in there that, that is, you know, doesn't pertain to our district or there are things that our district does that are a little bit different that you want to add, but typically that, those are a little bit less work.
And typically what Jean and I do is like look at the board to make sure there's not something huge and glaring or something that just doesn't fit with our school flow.
Right.
That's pretty much what we do.
Yeah, and certainly if anything comes up emerging between now and then and we have to move that later, like Amy said, it's not going to be a huge deal, but if we have a light schedule next time and we can bang some of those out, it would be great, so we don't get behind with negotiations and NBC and everything else starting up, I'd like to start the year off clean if we can.
The, the only other piece that I would add to that, sometimes that happens, if it's a health policy, I always send it to the school nurses, if it's, you know, there's an athletics component to one of them that I, I had sent off to Fred, so sometimes that might slow it a little bit if we need to run it by those professionals, but most of the time, that's not the case.
Cool, any other discussion on any policy?
Can we just go back to agenda forming for next meeting?
Sure.
I think it would be a good idea if we set aside some time to think about how to populate the Facebook page, because there's nothing worse than going to that Facebook page, you know, in September of 2022 and then you see like, you know, last updated, March 2021 and you're like, wow, this group is super on it. And so you need to consider that against what we were talking about earlier, which is, you know, not creating a huge pile of work for somebody.
Right.
So I think that's going to take a little bit of time.
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't think we'll have all the details ironed out next time, I'd like to look at surrounding schools, see what they're doing on a board level and, but yeah, any, any research anybody can do prior to next time around is certainly appreciated.
Do you mind if we go back to policy, just for, we had one more policy on there, I think we could probably take care of. So Amy, thank you for taking the time to update the language, so instead of, we're everywhere that it said handicap, Amy changed that out with five oh four eligible, which is more, I think more acceptable term and thank you for fixing the edits and adding in Pembroke. So the, the last time the School Board Association had updated this was 2006, which I, there's probably been no legislation that came along to require them to update it, so it's more in line with the times and if you're all set with it, is it required by law policy? So we could take action on that one.
Okay, is there a motion on KED?
KED.
Hey, any further discussion?
I was just going to make the comment that it does look a whole more modern, if anything. So, so it's essentially the same thing, but, so yes, it was very nice.
Cool, okay, then all in favor of approving KED, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Okay, policy KED is approved.
When we're talking about the agenda for the next meeting, we had said CIP was going to be on there, is that going to take?
Oh, that's right.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It doesn't take a whole lot of time.
Okay.
And it's most, you know, what, if you review in the meantime, sometimes there's questions about why the committee ranked something the way it did, that we may think it was a higher priority and Jerry will just speak to that, but it doesn't, just takes a few minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think this will even be a little bit quicker than in previous years, I know Jerry has expressed a lot of thanks, Josh has done a lot of work to get our sheet in line with their sheet, it's been something that he's wanted to have happen for a couple of years, so I think the discussion should be streamlined too, because usually we hear ten minutes from Jerry about how we need to fix our forms.
Thank you, Josh.
Okay, that brings us to number 10, which is our second public comment section, still don't see any members of the public, so we do have informational items from number 11.
That was just the mentioning Hill School.
Take off that, okay. So then we do have need to go into non-public session, in accordance to the NOSA 91-8:3, number two, small letter C, which is matters which have discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. An oral call vote to enter non-public is seven thirty-two, Stacy?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jean? Yep. Melanie?
Yes.
And Amy, yes, pause the video.